Rest.
Again, this is Tuesday, October 19th, 2021. It is five o'clock. We are now commencing this regular city council meeting, beginning with the closed session, which we anticipate taking approximately ninety minutes. So we expect to come back when that closed session is over and I expect it will be about six thirty. Anything more to be added, Mr. Walsh?
Not at this time. I see there is no members of the public attending, so there is no need for public comment.
All right. So we will now adjourn to our closed session colleagues and will return following that closed session for our open session. Thank you. We're moving to closed session now.
...
We are waiting a couple more of our council members and then we'll begin our meeting shortly.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It's 6:30. Our council is back in session. And we have just completed a closed session, which we considered two items. There is no reportable action, but one of those actions was our annual review of our city manager's performance as required by his contract. And while there's no reportable action, I'm pleased to say that our council performance as required by his contract. And while there's no reportable action, I'm pleased to say that our council is united in its gratitude for the service of our city manager and that he enjoys our full confidence and we thank him. With that, we'll move into tonight's agenda. And having called the meeting to order, we will now go to the roll call. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Prochan Vega.
How's it?
Councilmember Fernandez.
How's it?
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena.
How's it?
Councilmember Landsberg.
Present.
Mayor Stallard.
Present. So the record will reflect that we have a full council present tonight. I'd like to move along to the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm very pleased to ask a distinguished former member of the city staff, former community development director Janet Roger. Janet, would you unmute yourself, please, and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that, Janet. All right. We'll move along now to communications from the public. Madam Clerk, is there any communication from the public relative to items that are not otherwise on our agenda this evening?
I do have one. It's Clanton Way deterioration.
Please, go ahead and read it.
Thank you. Dear Woodland City Council, this letter is to inform the council of the ongoing road deterioration issue at 722 Elm Street in Woodland and how it has been managed. Some history. Circa 1986, the city of Woodland asked all residents who owned property on the Clanton Way alley to move their property line approximately two feet inward on each side. And from what I understand, the purpose was to widen the alley so the emergency vehicles can access the residents' homes that live there. Everyone except the neighbor to the south at the east end of Clanton Way did what was asked. Unclear. In my extensive research, there is no record of an easement or domain request or any documents regarding this. I have asked the city officials at the Planning Office, Public Works, and County Clerk's Office for any information about this, and they also could not find any records. Now, fast forward to 2004, when a 276-year-old city-maintained great oak fell during the summer limb drop. The tree was one-third of the way into the alley and the remainder was on our lot. It was determined to be unsafe and removed by the company West Coast Arborists. They removed the tree, ground the stump, leveled to the ground, and then Public Works backfilled the area with sand. Y.C. Parmea accepted the fence damage claim and it was rebuilt. My mistake was not obtaining a building permit for the small amount that needed to be repaired. We rebuilt the broken portion of the fence with an 18-by-18 concrete footing, and it contained four pieces of three-quarter-inch rebar, the entire length of the repair. Rebar was also used at each of the brick pillar points vertically. The pillars were rebuilt and then filled with concrete. This is a solid, overbuilt structure. At this point, we assumed that the road, the fence, the property were repaired sufficiently, although the question of remediation with sand was still something on our mind, hence the overbuilt footing. Now, around 2013, we noticed that a small opening in the road adjacent to our fence opened and was absorbing water. This created a sinkhole in the road and on our property going under the repaired portion of the fence where the great oak stump was ground down. I promptly contacted Public Works to return to fill the hole with more asphalt, then began the pooling of water again. From then on, water would pool from the repaired portion of the fence during the rainy season. See images. This would span all the way eastward to the sidewalk where the water could not pass to the gutter. As time, traffic, and heavy utility vehicles would use the road, the hole would open repeatedly, furthering the sinkhole and causing more damage. At this point, we thought it prudent to contact the city, specifically Katie Wurzel, who is transportation engineer for the city. And we did so every year since then, as the issue remained and the road hadn't been repaired. On multiple occasions, she suggested we contact Public Works and at that time explicitly stated that there were no plans to fix the alley. Each time the hole opened, we called and it was patched, yet the issue of drainage remained. So after rains, the pooling finds its way to the low spot where the tree was.
Okay. Thank you, Ana. That is the three minutes we allowed each speaker. So I want you to know, Mr. Ortega, I believe, that submitted the letter?
Yes.
It's been, a copy of that letter has been sent to each member of the council, so we have all had the opportunity to read the entire comments beyond what three minutes allow. And we'll just refer that matter to our staff to see what, if anything, can be done. All right? Thank you. Is there anybody else with public comment tonight, Madam Clerk?
Everything else that I have is item for item 12.
Okay, thank you. So.
Hey, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, this is Jay. We do have one voicemail, but I think it's Ron about the email that he sent. I think it's the same thing.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll hold anything relating to our parks to the appropriate item later in the agenda. Thank you.
The one from Ron is not related to parks. It is a different matter.
Oh, okay, then please have, if it's not on the agenda, have him proceed.
Well, my name is Ron Ortell. This is in regard to item F, public comment, not on the agenda. This comment is submitted in regard to the Spring Lake, in regard to the school district's continuing difficulty regarding their own planning to meet the needs of parents and children of Spring Lake and how their lack of planning is also now threatening to impact other residents and the city itself. There is a long history of mismanagement combined with lack of adequate funding plans by the school district. Unfortunately, the district and the city itself is on track to continue this failure in regard to both Spring Lake Elementary and the school plant at the Technology Park. This mismanagement is now threatening to derail recently updated plans for the neighborhood's existing parks, particularly Rick Gonzalez Park. Rather than questioning this mismanagement, the city is participating in it. The lack of planning and coordination with the city is also threatening efforts to build another school at the planned Technology Park. Publicly disclosed plans, including enrollment numbers, do not exist for either of these locations or at the 20-acre middle school site adjacent to Pioneer High. And yet, the city is being asked to subordinate its own plans in response to the ever-changing plans exhibited by the school district. In regard to the city's ongoing complicity, there is one exception regarding the Spring Lake School. To be specific, the city's traffic engineers have specifically asked the school district to orient their parking lot, school, and access point on Nikol rather than Banks Drive. There's actually a plan which shows that as well. Unfortunately, as an autonomous agency, the school district was able to disregard the city's recommendations without ramifications. Now, the district is seeking to expand the size of Spring Lake Elementary beyond what it was designed for. If that perceived is going to have impacts on traffic and the size of the adjacent park possibly, and yet, the plans have not been documented in terms of enrollment or actual need for physical space beyond its own take at 10 acres, or how it would impact other school sites. In addition, the common areas have not been designed for a significant increase in size and size of enrollment. Given that Spring Lake's plans have existed for two decades, what is the justification or reason for the surprise increase in planned enrollment? Does it have anything to do with abandonment of plans for a school at the Technology Site? There are schools in Woodland, including in Woodland, which occupy less land than the 10 acres that Spring Lake already has, but also accommodate more students than Spring Lake would have under any scenario. Prairie, I believe, is one example. There's also been no discussion of the 20-acre middle school site, whether or not it's actually needed, another middle school in terms of the city itself, and whether or not it could accommodate a K through eight itself. They have 20 acres already. There's infrastructure there. And yet, there's no discussion of this. Perhaps the developer of the Technology Park site can be asked to make a contribution toward that plan rather than accommodating within the Technology Park itself. Again, this is Ron Ortell, Spring Lake resident. Thank you very much.
Thank you to both of our public commentators. Does that conclude public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, I have one more email to read.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Speed limit removal. The usage of speed limits on public roads has increased traffic congestion, decreased roadway safety, and reduced property values and economic output. This policy has made public roads less helpful in transporting people, freight, and other necessities. This inefficiency is due to the lower speeds at which vehicles can transport people and freight and the increase in traffic congestion. In addition, the roadway is less safe because of speed limits and it increases the likelihood of accidents. Speed limit signage, especially those displaying a lower numerical value, diminishes neighboring properties. Aesthetics affecting businesses, individuals, and commercial and residential property values. The speed limits have also reduced the economic output of businesses and individuals, making it less cost competitive to do business or reside in areas with speed limits. Policymakers should have speed limits withdrawn. Please remove speed limits on public roads. Thank you.
And who submitted that?
Communicate, C C I B. Yeah, that's all it says.
Okay. Appreciate if people submit emails, if they would attach their name to them so we know who to direct our responses to. Thank you. And I appreciate all the comments tonight from the public. With that concluded, we'll now move over to communications for the councils and staff. And Rich Landsberg, would you like to lead off tonight?
Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but I do see a raised hand amongst the attendees. I'm not sure.
Thank you. Let us see who that is. Hard to keep track of all of these things. I do not see a raised hand. It went down. It went down.
It went down.
Okay. So, thank you. So then I will again state that public comments concluded items not otherwise on the agenda tonight. And we now will go turn to our attention to the council and staff for their information. And Rich, I've asked you to speak first, if that's all right.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, very much. I have very brief announcements tonight. The only thing I really want to say tonight is I wish to acknowledge our three colleagues, Vicky Fernandez, Tanya Garcia-Cadena, and Maya Ravega, for participating in interview with the Sacramento Bee and making our city proud of them even more than we already were. I'm very proud to work with these three colleagues and how they represent the diversity of our city and appreciate their work. And I'm glad they're members of our city council. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Rich. Ditto, as they say. Tanya, would you like to go next?
Sure. Thank you, Rich. And, and Mr. Mayor, so, let's see. On October 10th, I attended the grand reopening of Explorer Science Center and had the opportunity to speak with David, I believe his last name is Muse, who will be the educator for the Woodland Regional Park. And so it was nice to get to chat with him and, and hear some of his ideas. I look forward to when we finally open the, the regional park. It's going to be a really, a really nice asset for our community. On October 11th, I met with the staff from Brown Issues to discuss their mentorship programs and, and opportunities that, that we may have for them to engage some of their youth. And let's see. Last Saturday, on the 16th of October, I stopped by the concerts that we had downtown. And Blue Note and Father Patty's both had great crowd. They were well-attended. And so I think both businesses were happy with how things, how things turned out. So thank you for, Rich, with coming up with that idea, and Ken and Spencer for helping make that happen. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia-Cadena. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor Stallard. And thank you, Rich and Tom, for the nice comment. I just want to add a few comments about this last few weeks. I was able to attend the Holy Rosary Mass on October 7th and present a proclamation for the city on their 150th anniversary of the school and church. And so they were very pleased. Was able to present it to Father Molina. They were very happy and, and very proud of the city's recognition. Also attended the Collaborative for Woodland Youth, her weekly, monthly subcommittee. And again, they had Superintendent Garth Lewis of Yole County Office of Ed kind of present some of the collaborations that the city of Woodland will be participating with, with the county and with the Office of Education. So on October 16th, I want to thank our city manager, Ken Hyatt, and Christine Engel, and Alma Lopez from Brown Issues, and Elise Doyle Martinez with their collaboration on the viewing of McFarlane USA on Second Street between Doggone Alley and Main Street. Had a wonderful presentation by one of the members of the Cross Country Championship team, Tomas Faya. So thank you to those who attended and thank you for that collaboration with the Brown Issues. Also, we are participating in a local event coming up this next Saturday. If anyone is interested in adopting a pet, we received notice today from Yellow County Animal Services Shelter that they're having a virtual adoption event on Facebook on October 23rd from 11 to 1. So if you're in need of a pet, please take a visit onto their Facebook page. And also, the redistricting issue, we have a committee that we have in place, but the county also has a redistricting advisory commission. So if anyone is interested in participating and giving their views on the, the maps that are being considered for the county seats, please take a look at the Yellow County site and, and participate. There was a meeting last night with the commissioners. So again, they appreciate community input and they're looking for any concerns or suggestions that we might have. So just a heads up for, for that participation. And also, if anyone is interested in being a member of our planning commission, there is an opening available on the planning commission. So please let us know if you're interested and there's an application you could submit online. And on a personal note, I just want to thank everyone for their condolences and want to thank the office of Congressman Garamendi, who acknowledged my dad with the congressional commendation at his funeral service. So thank you to Congressman Garamendi and Dr. Ortiz for that, that memorial's recognition on his behalf. So thank you. And again, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. For myself, I would like to mention that the Woodland Davis Clean Water Agency continues to monitor the water situation, but it, as you've heard in our report at our last council meeting from Tim Bush, our water situation is stable. Although we are seeking additional surface water supplies to minimize our need for untreated groundwater for all kinds of reasons. We're actually using a different kind of water treatment medium at our plant, and so far, it's going very well. We're glad about that. We still continue to urge our citizens to be as conservative as possible in their use of water. Sacramento Area Council of Governments has taken on the challenge to dig deep on diversity, equity, and inclusion issues, particularly as they relate to transportation planning. Our next metropolitan transportation plan, Sustainable Community Strategy, will reflect what we are learning. Next item, Valley Clean Energy is struggling with the impacts of California Public Utilities Commission policies and regulations. Unfortunately, it will mean increasing our rates to meet these added costs. As a young agency, we still have mostly short-term, higher-cost energy contracts, but we are putting in place long-term energy contracts which are more economical, giving us hope that there can be some rate relief in a couple of years. Now, for some good news for our community. Liveability.com just announced its 100 best places to live in the United States. And Woodland, at 55th place on the list, outscored more than 1,000 cities with populations between 20,000 and 1 million in this data-driven ranking. The citation contained these additional comments. Quote, "This forward-looking city is supportive of businesses, big and small. Through private-public partnership, the city recently opened the lab at AgStark, an innovative shared wet lab, food lab, and co-working space for startups." Bravo, friends. And then as we conclude our meeting later tonight, I would ask that we adjourn in memory of lifelong resident and small business owner, John Hoover. And now for the mayor's minute. Sometimes citizens will claim that we don't listen, when in reality, we are listening. We are just not necessarily agreeing. It is inappropriate for us to ever come down squarely on an issue until it is heard at a council meeting. This is so we ensure that we have not made up our mind on any issue until we have heard all the input, including public comments. We appreciate that valid concerns of individual citizens, even groups, small and large, can advocate for their concerns. Our decisions should be based on the interests of the whole community, particularly for those that are. particularly for those that are often unheard, including children. I make these remarks not for my colleagues who know these things, but for the larger community with the hope that they would be understanding of our role. With that, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to focus my comments this evening on a topic that Councilmember Fernandez mentioned, and that is the redistricting process. So as Councilmember Fernandez pointed out, the city and the county are going through two separate processes right now to redistrict or redefine the boundaries, in our case, our council boundaries. And in the county's case, of course, supervisors' boundaries. So as you recall, the council appointed a five-member commission referred to as the Advisory Redistricting Commission, and they've been busy at work putting together a process for them to ultimately make a recommendation to the council for new maps. And as part of that process, we'll be engaging, starting next month, with a public process. They held their first public hearing actually last week, but wanted to highlight for the council some of their work. First, what you see here is a brand for the effort and the initiative that they're going to be going through. And the intention here was really to gain some focus and recognition to the public opportunity to engage in this process, kind of borrowing from some of the other cities throughout the state. So through several meetings, the committee came up with the tagline, "Our community, your voice, Woodland, California." So you will start to see this through communications coming up as early as this week, but really through the next several months as the commission guides through a public workshop process. So just want to show a slide real quick. There will be a series of six focused public opportunities to engage with the commission and staff and use their own expertise to define their community of interest, their neighborhood, and help inform district boundary maps. So there'll be two meetings, public meetings in November, two in December, and two in January, spread throughout the community. One of the meetings will also be a virtual opportunity for public input. So look forward to more information coming out on these public meetings. Also want to highlight that the city has continued to build out its webpage so people that are interested in understanding more about what this process is and how to engage. And also now, I believe by the end of this day, if not tomorrow, be able to access a virtual mapping tool so they can start to draw the lines themselves on these district maps and see how the voter population, as well as demographic data, get adjusted with that. So look for more information as we head through the next month. And let me know if you have any questions and ways to help promote getting public input through that process. Also, want to take a quick look at the long range. The November 2nd meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks will focus on really some budget information. We'll have a quarterly update on how the city's forecast and the budget compares to where we thought we would land last year. We will also bring back to full council consideration, American Rescue Plan funding framework and proposal. Staff has been working with the subcommittee to put some final clarity around what that recommended spending plan might look like. So we'll have a good discussion with the council on the use of the $11 million that the federal government has provided through that act. And then also, the council asked that the animal services contract be brought back to them prior to execution. Staff is working with county staff to modify that contract to address the concerns that the council expressed. So that will be on the next agenda as well. And then second meeting in November, just a couple of highlights. First, over the last year plus, we have been processing and evaluating a potential amendment to the city's ordinance pertaining to commercial cannabis. So we will be bringing back a public hearing with recommendations to amend the city's cannabis ordinance to permit potentially up to four dispensaries, commercial dispensaries here in town. So we'll have that on the agenda for council consideration. And then we'll close out that meeting with, if you can believe it or not already, rotation of the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem. So the mayor has suggested we consider that evening to close that meeting with transition of the duty of mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, so that come December, we'll have that transition complete. So those are the highlights for upcoming long-range agenda. Concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Manager, I'm sure this is repetitive, but could you tell us, is there an outside date for the redistricting commission to have its work done so that its recommendations come to council?
Yes, the schedule that they've adopted intends to have a recommendation to the council by the first meeting in March. So the council will have several meetings to work through a final recommendation and adopt a map.
And what is our deadline?
Yeah, the council's deadline, I believe, Anna, correct me if I'm wrong, is April 17th to have a final map adopted.
Correct.
Thank you. Any additional questions for my colleagues? All right, that concludes communications. Oh, yes, please.
I didn't get a chance for my communication. May I?
I'm so sorry, Myra. You were off my screen and I forgot. I apologize. Please proceed.
No worries. Thank you, thank you. For my report, thank you, Rich and Mayor, for your comments on the article. I think it highlighted something that is on the top of my mind. And a lot of women in the community, right, vying for a political role within our local community because we want to make some changes and get involved, is something that's often scary. So I appreciate the support and the heightened visibility around that. And I look forward to continuing this trajectory that we have here in our city. I want to add just a thanks to city manager and Kim for joining me for my monthly community discussions in District 5. This is an opportunity for community members throughout the district to come and have a conversation around issues that are impacting the neighborhood and also some follow-up items. So thank you for doing that. The next one is scheduled for November 9th at Rick and Zales Park. It's open agenda. We do take some talking points in advance just to make sure that neighborhood issues are addressed. And also, I wanted to highlight a program that I think is very valuable that the library is currently taking registrations for, and that's the Adulting 101 Life Skills. It's a great program. It takes a chunk of a day. It takes young kids and teens and teaches them Adulting 101. And I think it's a great program. It's a great way to teach some of these soft skills, life skills, that teenagers need to really help them transition into adulthood. So I think the registration is open now for the program, November 13th. And also in the mail, last week, I got a community services flyer about a parents' night out that the Community Services Department is hosting on Friday, December 10th. So what a great way for parents to have a night out, maybe go out and eat at some of our restaurants and have the kids enjoy an evening with other kids in the city. So this is a great way, and I'm happy to see these programs be developed and shared with the community. That'll be all, Mayor Stallard. Thank you. Oh, Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tem Vega, and I apologize again for overlooking you with the first call round. Okay, that concludes, again, the communications from council members and staff. And we've already, Long Beach Calendar commented upon, that brings us to our consent calendar, item H. And we have items four through nine on the consent calendar. Is there any item that any member of the calendar council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Okay, after the consent calendar, I would like to invite Christine Engel to update us because her quarterly report's in here, but we can proceed to approve the consent calendar and then go to her comments. Can I have a motion, please?
Landsberg will move the consent calendar.
Second by Fernandez.
Thank you, with a motion by Councilmember Landsberg, seconded by Councilmember Fernandez. The consent calendar is now before us for action, but I hadn't asked for public comment. Madam Clerk, is there any on the consent calendar?
No.
All right, then there being no further discussion, please call the rule on the motion.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Stallard?
Aye. Thank you. And now, before we proceed to the next item, it occurred to me, because we have these quarterly reports, that occasionally, it might be nice to have the department head give a little narration of what's been happening in their operation. And COVID has been a different world. We haven't been hearing news regularly from some of our staff members. So without objection, colleagues, I'd like to invite Christine Engel to update us on how the Community Service Department is evolving in this era that's not exactly post-COVID, but it's at a time of lessening restrictions. So Christine, please give us a little update on what's going on for you and your department.
Absolutely. I'm going to share with you a little of what has happened during the quarter, the period that the quarterly report covers, which is July through September, and then give you a sneak peek of what we have planned for 2022, which is fast approaching. The summer was really busy for the department and almost looked like a pre-COVID environment with summer camps running at four parks for kids between those entering grades one through eight. There were about 160 children that participated in that. We also had youth volunteers at these parks that accumulated over 1,500 hours of community service. And for a third year in a row, we collaborated with Woodland Joint Unified School District to offer summer at City Hall. We held swim lessons for 800 participants and continued our public swim and lap swimming programs. And we were also able to start our adult softball program again, boxing and tennis. We opened the gym for gym sports, and then we closed the gym because of the mask mandate. And then we just, this week, reopened the gym for badminton and pickleball, and so far, so good. On the senior side, our senior center is up and ready, not, you know, 100% capacity, but we do have volunteer staffing the desk, community care. Community Care Car is also operating with its office at the community center. We have art programs such as ceramics and wood carving and senior exercise classes and games like the ever-popular bingo and support groups, like the stroke support group and the MS support group, and other activities for seniors like senior movie days. Our after-school program started at Douglas Middle School and Lee Middle School. And then in addition to the YMCA being open at the community center, we have Pilates, yoga, Rocksteady, boxing, which is the program for Parkinson's patients, our country western line dance. And then we completed our first softball season since COVID, and we're going to be starting flag football. Events that we have coming up on October 29th, we're having our first floating pumpkin patch at the community pool. And as Councilwoman Vega mentioned, we have our Parents' Night Out. On January 1st, we're doing a polar bear plunge. We'll be celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King with a community day of service on January 15th. And then continuing through the year and with different holidays like Valentine's Day letters, Valentine's Day cookie decorating, the shamrock hunt. We're returning to our traditional Rexpo, our recreation exposition in the building on March 18th, celebrating Caesar Chavez, egg hunt delivery, seniors-to-seniors letter, Fourth of July, and so forth. And we'll go back to our regular schedule for our movies on Main Street in October, a movie at the pool, and a movie at a couple of different parks as well. So are there any questions?
It sounds like getting back to normal. That sounds pretty good, Christine.
We're trying.
Questions, colleagues?
I do. I have a quick question. So this polar bear plunge, Christine, is that something that's new? I don't know that I'd participate, but I didn't know that that's something that we do here.
Yeah, it's actually, it's something that's new, and it's one of those things when we were trying to identify activities that we could do that are kind of polar friendly, COVID-friendly, and something to attract the public to the pool, that we decided to have a polar bear plunge, and we'll be offering discounted season passes and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Will we turn off the heater for the pool for a period of time?
No, it's still going to be cold, though.
Oh.
Cold enough.
Great. Well, it's nice to remember all the good things going on in the community that our city makes possible through your department, Christine. Please thank your team for all of us. Now, did I jump over anybody on the council? Do you have any comments, my colleagues?
I have some comments, Mayor Stallard.
Please proceed.
Thank you so much for that overview of everything that you have going on. I do have some questions around the return of seniors to different programs. You know, I'm always concerned through the pandemic about the isolation and a lot of other programs that you offered were, sometimes they'll be the only opportunity for them to socialize. Are you seeing them return back? Are you seeing some of the folks that previously participated return to programming?
It's been slow, so yes and no. For bingo, absolutely. Bingo is very popular, as is our movie day, and we'll be adding additional movie days. They're still socially distanced and everything else. We were hoping to have a Thanksgiving meal in about a month, but because it would be 200 seniors, the vulnerable population, not socially distanced without masks eating, it's not advisable. So we'll be doing either delivery or a drive-through dinner. So if we do need drivers, I will let you all know that we're looking for people to drop off meals to seniors. There are some support groups that are continuing, and then we're giving options for participants as well, like Rocksteady. You can participate during the week virtually, or there's other days where you can come in person. So it's picking up. It's not as robust because, you know, some seniors do have their own, you know, opinions and concerns, but we are seeing people return, but it's definitely not, you know, normal yet.
Got it, got it. And then I have seen advertising for the community car for drivers. So it seems like you guys are always looking for drivers to help out.
There's always volunteer activities, definitely, are opportunities.
Good. And my other comment is just around, I mean, I was, had the privilege of being at the pool and seeing how popular it was. And, you know, I shared with you how I had community members reach out that they were put on waitlist and children weren't able to participate in swim lessons. And, you know, just thinking about planning for next year and more capacity, maybe building a pipeline earlier. Is there, do you have any plans in place to build in the ability to hire more guards or more swim lesson structures? Is that something that you're working on to increase the availability of swim lessons?
Always, but some of, we were still under COVID restrictions this last summer, so we really hadn't returned to our full programming. But we'll always see that, you know, sometimes people can't get the classes that they want, but we'll definitely have more opportunities for swim lessons next summer. And we're always, yeah, we're always, you know, even now, right now is our planning time for next summer. By Thanksgiving, we really have to have everything identified that we will be offering because we produce our recreation guide, which are, like, kind of, one of our big deadlines is Thanksgiving, and then Christmas, and then it's sent out to families in early February.
One of the things that jumped out at me on the parents' night out is that you guys were taking in kinder, and I know that was another issue that was brought to my attention during the summer, just having the summer fun club open to kindergartners. So do you think that that's something that's going to be able to be put in place for next summer?
Probably not, because that age group is so different than the rest of the kids that they're at the park with, and they're there with them for so long that we take those that are, that have completed kindergarten and they're entering first grade, but not those that have not yet entered kindergarten. It's just, it's an outdoor program, and it's just not the ideal condition for that age of a child for the duration.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That'll be all, Mayor Stallard. Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Christine, would you care to comment on this audiovisual project you're doing for the community and senior center? We just approved the money.
Absolutely. We're, thank you very much. We're really excited to be able to move forward with replacing the audiovisual components at the community and senior center. You know, as you know, the community center has been there for just about 15 years. And over time, and as you know, with your cell phones and any electronics that you own, things change so quickly, and we've been able to do a lot of workarounds with the systems that we have in place. But, you know, we're not actually able to have connectivity with different rooms and everything else. So the systems that we're going to be getting are really going to be propelling us to current day and into the future so that we can have, you know, Zoom meetings and just much better technology, and it'll work better for those that are having business meetings and having parties and also having city council meetings. So we're hoping that we will have all of this done before we're really up and running again, like, early in the new year. We're hoping that any of these chips- We're hoping that any of these chip shortages don't slow us down, but we're really also grateful for the finance department and for the city manager and for you all for making this happen for us, and to the community. The community is going to be grateful as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Madam Clerk, has this discussion elicited any public comment? You're muted.
I'm sorry. No, it has not.
All right. Well, Mayor, I have a comment for Christine.
Go ahead.
I wish to thank Christine and her staff, even Dallas Tungali, who's wearing a Giants hat, for responding to the pickleball group who wanted to play indoors. This kind of responsiveness is what the city should always be doing, at the same time, making sure that we keep our citizens safe. And thanks to Christine and her staff, they were able to come up with some solutions to get the pickleball. And thanks for taking that hat off, Dallas. It should be blue. Anyway, thank you, Christine and Dallas, for taking care of that. The pickleball players are very grateful to you and to the city. Thank you. Go ahead and put your hat back on, Dallas.
As I said at the outset, I don't think our department head should expect that every quarterly reports can result in an oral presentation, but it's been a long time, Christine, so it's great to get updated by you personally. Thank you. All right. So we will now return to our agenda and move on to reports with the city manager, and it's all about parks at this point. And we're going to item 10, the 2022 Spring Lake Parks Project for Spring Lake Park Master Plan. And Myra, you might want to mute and shut your video off for a few minutes, because I understand you're recusing yourself because of your home's proximity to this park. All right. So we'll.
Loop me in or text me when I can jump back on.
Okay, Mr. Manager, would you do that?
Absolutely. Yep.
Thank you, Myra. All right. So we'll proceed with item 10. Mr. Manager, do you want to introduce this topic?
Yeah, I would be happy to, Mayor. So I will provide a little bit of context, and then hand it over to Christine. The next three items in order are to consider master plans for three neighborhood parks in Spring Lake. Action on these three items are agendized to be taken up individually, but as they all pertain to park amenities in Spring Lake, and were part of a combined public outreach process this past summer, I thought it'd be appropriate for me to provide a bit of a general overview before handing it over to Christine to walk through each individual park master plan.
Mr. Manager? I'd like to ask the city attorney, should we invite Myra Vega back in to hear this presentation? Although she would not vote on the first item, because she is going to be proceeding on the second two items.
Right. So my understanding is, I think Ken is just giving a little bit of background, and he's going to focus on them one by one. Is that correct, Ken?
Yeah, that's correct. And I would, you know, argue that Myra's probably received all this background just in our direct interaction and questions with Spring Lake folks, so.
Thanks for addressing my concerns. If she's up to speed, then proceed with your overview and discussion on the first one. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and so I touch a little bit on the Spring Lake specific plan, park requirements. The specific plan included 58.4 acres of parks. Spread out throughout the plan is shown on this map here, consisting of three neighborhood parks. Those are the larger squares in one rectangle there. Each of those three neighborhood parks was prescribed in the original Spring Lake specific plan as eight-acre neighborhood parks. The Rick Gonzales Park was increased to a 10-acre park several years back as we were going through a rezone request from one of the landowners out there. So ultimately, the city ended up adding additional two acres, as opposed to the two-acre commercial site, to that park. Additionally, there's a four-acre Spring Lake Central Park in the plan. And then, lastly, to complete the obligation to meet the city's park requirements, the Spring Lake specific plan included a 28.4-acre sports park requirement. That requirement has now been satisfied as part of the, you know, sports park complex on the west side of 113, and combined as part of a larger, community-wide sports park amenity that will ultimately be 38 acres and not including the community center property. The funding to complete these parks comes from development impact fees paid for by home builders when they pull a permit. They have a specific allocated fee that they pay towards the park improvements. The city collects that funding, then uses that funding, aggregates it over time to acquire the land for the parks, pay for the design, construction documents, and then ultimately construct the parks themselves. Once the parks are completed, those improvements then are maintained by the city, and that maintenance cost is covered by the Spring Lake Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District. As Spring Lake neighborhood and specific plan area has built out, the city has accumulated these park fees and constructed improvements to the parks in a manner where we attempt to sort of phase the park improvements to distribute proportionately the park amenities throughout the plan area. The specific plan wasn't a very clean sort of sequential build-out. It was set up to somewhat be flexible in how it was phased and built out. And so what we've been conscious of trying to do as we collect these fees is ensure that each quadrant of the specific plan area has a park amenity improved as those homes surrounding it get built out. Approval of the master plans that are before you, though, this evening will allow the city actually to move forward with the final design and construction documents for completion of both Jack Slaven Park, which was the first park built in Spring Lake, as well as the Spring Lake Park, as well as a portion of the remaining three acres that are unimproved at Rick Gonzales. We anticipate, if council approves these master plans this evening, coming back to the council in spring of next year to approve the actual construction documents. That will then allow us to move forward with bidding and ultimately constructing the improvements to these parks as part of next summer with the goal of having the park improvements open to the public by early 2023. So that concludes my overview. I'll have Christine now walk through the Spring Lake Park public input process and recommendations through that process to the Spring Lake Park Master Plan.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you information related to the updated park master plans for the three neighborhood parks in Spring Lake: Spring Lake Park, Jack Slaven Park, and Rick Gonzales Senior Park, as well as a little information on the currently unnamed four-acre park referred to as Spring Lake Central Park. Sorry, I'm trying to advance here. Okay, so public input on the proposed amenities to the parks was solicited through online surveys and open house in August at the community and senior center, a meeting with the Subcommittee of the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as updating the commission at their September meeting. I'd like to point out that we received over 1,000 surveys from the public about their preferences at the four parks. Of the respondents, only 10% did not live in the Spring Lake area, and a small percentage lived near Central Park, about 8%. Respondents indicated that they travel outside of Spring Lake for basketball courts, shade, play structures, trails, and dog parks. Top amenities that residents stated they were looking for included sports courts, a dog park, and informal play areas. Parking was not listed as a high priority. Residents also indicated that they heard about the survey mostly through social media, 42%, and a flyer, 29%. We currently have about $776,000 in the approved budget to cover the design of the three parks. With continued development in Spring Lake and payment of Spring Lake Park impact fees, we estimate that there will be sufficient funding to complete the construction of all three parks in the 2023 fiscal year. As the city manager indicated, future council action will be necessary to appropriate this anticipated funding prior to bidding for construction. The total estimated project cost for all three parks, including project management, design, construction, and inspection, is estimated to be $6.3 million. Before I transition into the discussion for the three parks, I wanted to note that while we collected information for what is, for the park being referred to as Central Park, the master plan for this park has not yet been developed. Future outreach would need to be conducted when it is closer to planning and building this park. Therefore, I will not be presenting information to you tonight on that park. First park I'm going to talk about is Spring Lake Park. And Spring Lake Park is located on Shellhammer Drive and Osborne Drive, and it is a part of the CalWest subdivision west of Harry Lorenzo. Two of the eight acres were developed in 2018. With the first two acres, the park included a playground for children between the ages of two and five, a small picnic area, multi-use turf area, and a native vegetation play area. 205 people responded to the survey for this park. The highest-scoring field amenity was for a soccer field. The highest-record activities was for a sports court. While there was a previously approved master plan, the subdivision around the park was still being developed, and many homes were not occupied. For this reason, it was critical to survey the current residents and propose changes to the master plan. The residents at the time when the two acres was developed wanted less turf and more areas with native vegetation for play. However, there were basically only model homes in the area at this time. The proposed changes, based on the new survey results, provides for a lot of open space and courts for play. Proposed new amenities include a youth soccer field, sports court, a play structure for children between the ages of five and 12, lawn, walking path, and a group picnic area, and this is directly in response to the survey results. The cost estimate to complete this park is about $4.6 million, and we anticipate starting construction in early summer 2022 and opening the new amenities in spring of 2023. The action in front of you this evening for this park is to review and approve the updated master plan. And at this point, will council be taking action before we call Myra back in for the other parks?
Correct. Yeah, we'll have council ask questions, have public comment on this one, take action, and then we'll invite her back in.
Mayor, you're muted.
I'm muted.
I'm sorry. Then why don't we proceed initially with public comment with respect to the Spring Lake Park Master Plan? And, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody who wishes to speak on item 10?
No.
All right. Then there'll be no, then there's no additional public comment. Let's bring it back to council. Does any council member have questions or comments on the proposed master plan for the Spring Lake Park?
Myra Stallard, I do. I have a, just a clarification. Christine, what is a multi-use sports court? What is that actually used for?
Very good question. I ask myself that all the time, but it's an area where you can have different striping for different sports. So you can have a basketball court, you can have four-square, that's what a multi-use court is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is it designed for pickleball as well?
It is not.
Okay.
It's too small.
Thank you. Additional questions on the subject of item 10?
Councilmember Fernandez has a question.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Stallard. I noticed on the survey it says 205 participants related to Spring Lake specifically. Correct.
They responded to the questions in the survey related to Spring Lake Park, yes.
205. So what's the estimate of residents surrounding that specific park area?
I would defer that to the city manager or the city engineer.
At the time the survey went out, I would say within a half mile of the site, there were, gosh, probably 300 to 400 homes that were, I would say, occupied, not under construction.
Okay, thank you. Just want to have a frame of reference as to the amount of participation from that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fernandez. Additional comments or questions from council? Okay, we've heard from the public, we've heard from the council. Is anybody prepared to offer a motion to adopt the master plan as proposed for Spring Lake Park?
Fernandez would like to make a motion to adopt the proposed.
Master plan.
Master plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Vicky. Is there a second to Councilmember Fernandez's motion?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena seconds the motion, presuming there's no further discussion. I believe we're ready to proceed to a vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Vega. Oh, she's absent. Councilmember Fernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena.
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg.
Aye.
Mayor Stallard.
Aye. Thank you. That concludes the action on item 10. Mr. Manager, I presume you're texting Myra so she can rejoin us?
Yep, she's in process to jump back in.
Well, let's just take deep breaths here for a minute, and we'll wait for Myra.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question, kind of in general.
Yes.
And I don't know if Ken or Christine who would answer this. What makes a park a neighborhood park versus just a park? I see that these are specifically being called neighborhood parks.
Yeah, I'll tackle that one. The, I think the definition of neighborhood versus community versus central park stems from the general plan. So the general plan sort of categorizes different types of parks. And so generally, they're informed by their size. So a neighborhood park will be in the, you know, 10 to 5-acre range. A small pocket park will be maybe two acres in size. And then when you get to a community park, generally, those are much larger. They're over 10 acres in size.
Okay, thank you.
It's fair to say, though, is it not, Mr. Manager, that all parks in Woodland are intended for all of our citizens, regardless of where they're located or what their size is?
That is correct. Yep.
Thank you. So the fact that it's called a neighborhood is reflecting of its location and its size. Okay. I'm not seeing Myra Vega yet back on the call.
Neither. Let me try to give her a quick call.
Okay.
All right, she's hopping back on now.
Good.
I'm on Mayor Stallard.
Welcome back, Myra. All right, well, we'll proceed now with item 11. We've had an overview of all three parks. We've taken action on item 10. Now we're prepared to take, to consider the action required for item 11, Jack Slaven Park. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you. I'll have Christine, again, walk the council through the survey results that we received and the refinements to the master plan for Jack Slaven Park.
Thank you. So Jack Slaven Park, this was the first park to be built in Spring Lake, and it was built in 2010. It is located on Mickle Avenue and Ortiz Avenue. 6.7 acres of this park are developed, with 1.3 acres remaining. This is a very popular park that includes a splash pad, lots of grass, playgrounds, and picnic shelters. Sorry, oopsie. Okay. 292 people responded to the survey for this park. The highest-scoring court activity was a sports court. The highest scoring court activity was a sports court. The original design included a parking lot. However, a parking lot did not rank high in the current survey results. Additionally, if we constructed a parking lot at this facility, that would divert funding from other high-ranked amenities that people, that thought were more important during the current survey. Also, the overall survey results demonstrated the need to have a dog park in Spring Lake, in the Spring Lake neighborhood. We explored and presented located the dog exercise area at Rick Gonzales Senior Park, but we found that Jack Slaven Park would be a better location since it is more centrally located within the Spring Lake community. Therefore, the proposed amenities to be added to Jack Slaven include a multi-use sports court, a dog exercise area, and a native natural play area. The cost estimate to complete this park is about $550,000. We anticipate starting construction in early summer 2022 and opening the improvements in spring of 2023. The action in front of you this evening is to review and approve the updated master plan for Jack Slaven Park.
Thank you, Christine. I think we'll again go directly to public comment, if any, on item 11 relating to Jack Slaven Park. Madam Clerk, has anyone indicated a desire to comment?
No comments.
All right, then I'll bring it back to council. Are there questions or comments from council members regarding Jack Slaven Park master plan?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
There is one hand raising.
Yes, Mayor Stalard, there is Ron Ortell raising his hand.
Then we're, okay, we're on item 11 relating to Jack Slaven Park. I trust he understands that. Please proceed, Mr. Ortell.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Stalard, I certainly do understand that. And I, I wanted to address this because it just came up, this neighborhood park versus, you know, community parks, et cetera, it came up in regard to this. My question is, how appropriate is it to have a neighborhood park embedded in the sports park? That's, that's one question I have. And the survey itself, these surveys, another, someone noted on the social media that these surveys could be filled out multiple times by the same person, depending on the device used. So when you say something like 292 people responded to this, that, you know, that certainly can't be counted on. And I wonder about even using a survey to design a park. You know, you had, I would think, a professional designer on all these parks. They thought there was a parking lot needed. So I don't see why this is a popularity contest on any of this. You mentioned the dog park. Well, that was over at Rick Gonzales, so is the, is the story now that the shifting of all the facilities over there due to the school district's interest has nothing to do with the dog park suddenly appearing over there at Jack Slaven? Because I find that hard to believe, and it's certainly not being supported by what you're presenting here tonight. Just suddenly, a minute ago, somebody said, yeah, it's because it's centralized. Well, it was centralized before. So I'm having trouble believing that even the plans at Jack Slaven aren't being impacted by this school district interest in Rick Gonzales. So based on all these things, including this, this neighborhood park in the sports park, you know, I, somebody ought to check into the legality of that. I doubt it's, you know, anyone ever has. But, you know, that's an ongoing sore spot with the residents of Spring Lake. Well, you know, so I, you know, I, I think you guys aren't presenting actual evidence of the plans you're presenting here. And it's, I'm not sure it's appropriate to be using surveys to, you know, this is, this is something you need a professional design on. So I'd, I'd suggest rejecting the recommendation to finalize Jack Slaven as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ortell. Are there any additional public comments that have come in that we may not have observed?
No.
All right, so with that, we will come again once to the council. And does any member of the council have a comment or question about this proposed master plan for Jack Slaven Park?
Mayor Stalard, I have a comment.
Please proceed. Mayor Protem Vega.
Thank you. Christine, can you go over the notification of the outreach for ideas and comments around these plans? I recall getting a mailer piece asking for input. Can you share who received those notifications and invitations for input?
Absolutely, and the city manager may chime in on this too, or the city engineer, but neighbors that lived, I want to say, within 300 feet of each of the road, actually, all of the Spring Lake residents received the notification for these, for the meetings and the surveys. Mr. City Manager, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct. We sent out notices to all addresses, as well as residents, within Spring Lake, both on the survey, but then also after the survey was done, we prepared, you know, draft preliminary amendments to the master plans, and then inviting the public to review those with the city staff and the consultants at a public, in-person meeting at the community center. So we did multiple noticing for opportunities for both of those input.
Okay, thank you for that. Something that I, that I hear often is, you know, the community in Spring Lake wanting to give input. So I appreciate you confirming that everybody within the development received this notification to give input. And as I do recall, it was in Spanish also, right?
That is correct, yeah. It went out in both English and Spanish. And that does not also count the opportunity for communication received electronically. So we did Facebook posts as well to solicit input.
Okay. And another question that I get often is, is why the change from the original, right? Why do the plans change over time? Can you remind the community when these plans were first came to bear and were adopted, the timeframe, and kind of these key changes that happened within the community since then?
Yeah, I'll take a stab, Christine. Feel free to also supplement it. But, you know, each of the master plans for these parks, as they were built at different times, right, had different residents living out there. Jack Slaven Park, you know, being the first park built out there, you know, went through a public process, engaging the residents, gosh, almost 15 years ago, developing that initial sort of vision and plan for that park. The, you know, subsequent neighborhood parks, both at Spring Lake and Rick Gonzales, we actually did a public process, starting in, I believe, 2015, 2016, to solicit from the residents across Spring Lake at the time, you know, what amenities they would like to see at those two new parks as well. We went through a series of public input opportunities for the residents to develop a draft master plan for the entire build-out of both of those parks, even though we weren't going to complete those, given the funding available at the time. But, you know, it's necessary to develop a comprehensive plan for the park at the time. And we acknowledged that those plans would be updated once, and we would reengage with the community once we had sufficient funding to complete it. You know, so with the completion funding available this year, we reengaged with the entire community again and had them look at, you know, all three parks. Now that we have, you know, more residents out in the neighborhood, they've been able to use amenities there and provide probably a little bit more informed input around what types of priorities they'd like to see in terms of amenities at the parks. You know, to the, to the point of parking at each of these parks, you know, I think part of that initial input that we received from, from residents for the first master plan was informed by Jack Slaven, which, you know, being the first park out there and not fully built out and having a very attractive amenity, I think residents were quite sensitive to the impacts of parking and primarily parking as the result of potentially residents coming from outside of the neighborhood or even the community impacting, you know, their streets. And so they were, you know, desirous of seeing additional parking to take some of that relief off, but also provide convenience to the amenities. You know, but as the survey results, you know, indicated, often, you know, there are choices, given the funding available, and parking fell down to the bottom of the list as compared to some of the other desired amenities. You know, also point out that, you know, these parks were specifically designed with, you know, comprehensive street system around them, so there's lots of available on-street parking. And now that we've had the three neighborhood parks built out, I think it disperses some of the attention at these parks. And again, there, as pointed out in the staff report and presentation, these are intentions as, as more neighborhood parks now and residents throughout the neighborhood now have the ability to walk or bike to a close park amenity. So I think all of that sort of factored into some of these amendments that we did consult with our design professionals on some of these inputs. We did a draft initial plan amendment, master plan amendment, and, you know, wanting to sort of revalidate some of these modifications with the neighborhood. That's why we held the, the public workshop in person for, for residents to come out, kind of see what those survey results might look like on a graphic and a built-out master plan. So, you know, we feel that we had a pretty robust process and good engagement. And, you know, not always going to receive consistent support for sort of the trade-offs that need to be made. But I think on balance, the residents felt, you know, good about the, the choices that were made in, in the master plans that were presented. And I think that's reflective of, you know, the feedback that we've received to date and, you know, supported by the Parks and Rec Commission Subcommittee as well, so.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Sorry, Mayor Stalard, one more comment around the Parks and Recs Commission. Are there, are they meetings open? Do they have regular participation? And the reason why I ask that is because some of the, the questions that I get are from residents who, the first time they've heard about some of these plans or changes or proposed plan modifications are when it comes to council. Is there an opportunity for these community members to engage with the Park and Rec Commission or give their feedback there, trying to understand why, where there's that gap and perceived communication gap?
I would say definitely that residents on any topic can participate in a Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. We meet the fourth Monday of every month at 6:30 PM. In regards to the Spring Lake Park's master plan updates, the opportunities for that, you know, is more specifically when we have the community meetings. People that were dissatisfied with the plans, though, definitely could have gone to the Parks and Recreation Commission to voice their concerns.
Thank you, Mayor Stalard. That'll be it. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Vega. Additional questions or comments from other council members?
Yes, I'd like to ask Christine a question about the splash pad.
Go right ahead.
You know, Christine, it seems to me that the splash pad on the east side of Woodland is very, very popular. Have you given consideration, and I know they're expensive, but because there's such a need in the east side of Woodland for this kind of amenity, will be considered a second splash pad for the east side in one of the parks?
Absolutely. We would love to have an up-to-date splash pad on the other side of town. One of the constraints is, is just financially, that it probably would cost about $1 million. The last time that we looked into this, it was about $800,000. There's just different requirements in terms of installing one right now for, because of the chlorine system and the recirculation of the water. So it is, it is definitely on our list.
Just need the money, is that right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments, discussion?
Councilmember Fernandez. I just want to ask for clarification. It says native play area was one of the added amenities. I'm not sure exactly if you could explain what that is.
Absolutely. But that is just an area where it's more, it's, it's a planted area that might have some rocks and might have, you know, some very small little mounds, like things that children can kind of climb through, and it's sturdier vegetation. So it, it's to create an environment like you're out, outside in the woods. But not necessarily the woods, but, you know, it's just not grass.
Yeah, more informal play with native landscaping and natural features.
Okay, and thank you. And then my second question, which is, where was the intended parking, can I ask that question? The intended parking lot intended to be on, in, in Jack Slaven Park? That it was mentioned that we, wasn't a priority on the list. Was there a location for that initially? For the parking lot?
Yeah, my understanding was the original plan for Jack Slaven Park included a parking lot at the roundabout, so that area where, essentially where the dog exercise area is proposed, was the, the parking area.
Okay, thank you. Just curious.
Now, let me ask, are there further questions or comments or discussion, colleagues? It's the pleasure of the council.
Moved by Landsberg.
Seconded by Protem Vega.
Okay, with the motion by Councilmember Landsberg and seconded by Mayor Protem Vega, and presuming there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, I ask you to call a roll.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Vega.
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena.
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg.
Aye.
Mayor Stalard.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. That, that concludes our discussion on item 11. And it takes us to our last item of the evening, and that is Spring Lake Parks Project, Rick Gonzales Senior Park Master Plan. Your manager?
And again, I'll ask Christine Engel to walk the council through the, the survey results and the final master plan recommendations. I'll conclude with some remarks on this one, given the, you know, recent developments and conversations with the district about potential Spring Lake Elementary School expansion as part of this. So I'll have Christine walk through the, the process, public input that we've received, and I'll talk a little bit about where we're at with the district.
Great, thank you. So Rick Gonzales Senior Park was constructed in 2018. It is located on Mickle Avenue and Centennial Drive, adjacent to Spring Lake Elementary. The park is 10 acres in size, seven of which are developed. 307 people responded to the survey for this park, the highest priorities being tennis and a sports court. While the city was planning for improvements to this park, Woodland Joint Unified School District reached out to the city during the public outreach phase to explore the potential to expand the Spring Lake Elementary School site in response to growing enrollment needs in the neighborhood, school enrollment needs in the neighborhood. The district and the city are evaluating the feasibility of expanding the school site by about 2 acres in order to accommodate their school site needs and to meet state requirements. The area under evaluation is shown towards the bottom, and it's shown in the shaded area. The shaded area is about 1 and 3/4 acres of the remaining 3 acres. If this concept moves forward, proceeds from a transfer of parkland to the district would be put back into the Spring Lakes Park funds and reserved for remaining improvements to Spring Lake Parks. Additionally, discussions with the district include the possibility of public access to the fields and court facilities on the elementary school site during non-school hours. The updated master plan includes a proposed tennis court, pickleball court, and completion of landscaped areas. The addition of the tennis court, pickleball court, and the potential use of the basketball courts at Spring Lake Elementary School would respond to the survey results from the public. If the potential expansion option of the school site does not proceed, we would return to council with a request to update the master plan to include additional turf and a basketball court. The cost to complete this park is $1.1 million. We anticipate starting construction in early summer 2022 and opening the improvements in spring of 2023. At this time, I will turn the presentation back over to the city manager for some final results.
Yeah, thank you, Christine. So first of all, I wanted to clarify for the council and the community if the recommended action before the council is in fact approved this evening. Essentially, it's a similar action to the prior two, where we would be updating, in this case, the master plan and identifying an area that would be reserved for future consideration as potential school site expansion. But if that does not move forward, as Christine indicated, we would come back to the council to kind of reaffirm the master plan for the park. In no way would the council's adoption of this master plan commit the city to designating any portion of the park for school expansion. Rather, again, it would reserve that area to allow us an opportunity to engage with the community and the council and the district to discuss the merit and evaluate the merit of expanding the school site into the parkland area. Staff considered potentially deferring adoption of this master plan to give some time to get through that process. Unfortunately, that process would likely result in delay to these improvements that are recommended outside of the shaded area there in a way that would not allow them to proceed concurrently with the improvements to the other two parks, which would be somewhat of a detriment to the immediate neighborhood there, but also be less efficient in terms of a cost and execution of these improvements as we're intending to bid all of the park improvements identified in these master plans as part of one package next year. So our recommendation to the council this evening is to adopt the master plan as shown here, recognizing that there's still, you know, fair question regarding, you know, the balance of the shaded area here, but a commitment to the community and to the district to engage in a process to evaluate whether, you know, expanding the school site into this area is, is the best path forward for the balance of the community. So it doesn't, you know, preclude the council from exploring that, but at the same time, does not commit the council to dedicate this area to the expansion of the school site. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions, as I'm sure there may be many about what that process might look like, but I'll defer those to the council as we go through the questions and comment.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you, Christine Engel. Colleagues, first of all, time for public comments, so let's hear what the public has to say.
Thank you. I'll read the first email. My neighbors and I are not at all happy about the closed-door discussions about taking 2 acres of our park to enlarge Spring Lake School. You must know that school was never built for over 400 students. What the council and staff and Woodland Joint Unified School District needs to do is build a big elementary school in Tech Park in 2 to 3 years and start planning for a junior high school in our area. They should not be planning to enlarge Spring Lake School, which does not have the facilities for 200 more kids. It will take 2 to 3 years to make Spring Lake School larger. I think transparency is needed in the city of Woodland. The city and school leadership are not trusted by the residents of Spring Lake. That really must be corrected. Thank, thank you. Please share my email with other council members. Best be well. Tony.
We don't know Tony's last name?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next one, by Nikki Hamilton. Recently, I saw five vehicles of Cub Scouts arriving in the evening and parking on Mickle Avenue. This is the closest street to the playground and picnic area. One parent commented that a parking lot would be helpful. When the children exit the cars on the sidewalk side for safety, they must walk through tall and low bushes that are planted between the curb and the sidewalk. See attached photo. If there was a parking lot, the children could exit their cars safely onto flat paved ground. The parents could easily see several children as they are getting out of their cars and going to the play or picnic area. Another evening, I saw a private pickup truck park inside the park next to the picnic area. There was an ice group of people having a party. The pickup had ice chests and supplies in it and had driven onto the park to unload things. Then they left. The pickup parked near the tables for the duration of the party. If there was a parking lot, they could have parked there and unloaded much, unloaded much easier. Please reconsider the original plans and install a parking lot even if smaller than the original plans. Although this is considered a neighborhood park, many families drive here to use this great park. If no parking lot is approved, please add several cement paths between the curb and sidewalk along Mickle, so children can exit their cars safely. I do not live on Mickle, but live near this wonderful park. Walk around it every day. Thank you, Nicolette Hamilton.
Thank you. Additional comment?
Yes, from Esteban Soto Martinez. Good evening. I'm writing in regards, subject 2022 Spring Lake Parks Project. I'm a resident of Spring Lake and want to state opposition to the proposal of expansion of the Spring Lake Elementary into the Rick Gonzalez Park. I'm a parent of three children that currently attend, currently attend Spring Lake Elementary, and I'm very familiar with the current infrastructure, infrastructure of the school, the space allocation, and also with the current traffic we deal with every morning and afternoon. It is very clear to me and the other residents that the school cannot accommodate more students. It is also clear that the city should complete the park as promised to all of us years ago and should stop making last-minute decisions that impact our neighborhood. We are paying our share of taxes and would like to see them spent appropriately in what we were promised and on what we have voted in several occasions. Tennis court. The city shouldn't disregard the votes that were made in the last survey. The master plan had tennis courts. The survey voting, again, chose the tennis courts, and that is what should be done by the city. It has been clear for years that a second elementary school and a new middle school is needed in the area. These should be an investment by this, that the city should make in the Tech area. However, the very high taxes, including the mellow roos we are paying in Spring Lake, should be spent in completing the current parks, giving appropriate maintenance, and building new parks where appropriate. Please listen to your constituents and please reconsider this important decision that will impact all of our neighborhood in a negative way. Esteban Soto.
Is there additional comments, Madam Clerk?
We do have two voicemails.
One is, thank you, from, okay, from Ron Ortell, 107 signatures so far. Petition to Woodland City Council, I have attached a petition with 107 signatures as of yesterday. The petition states the following. In response to the school district's proposal to acquire a portion of Rick Gonzalez Park for their own use, we request that the city retain ownership of the entire Rick Gonzalez Park site and retain the existing peripheral access paths and lighting for public use. We ask the city to cease from entering into negotiations to sell the land to the school district and proceed with the already established plans to landscape the park based upon the city's recently completed outreach effort. Although I may continue collecting signatures, this initial effort is being provided to you in reference to the corresponding agenda items, Section I, reports of the city manager, item number 12, at this evening's council meeting regarding the finalization of park plans for Rick Gonzalez Park. These signatures were gathered at either the entrance to the curving concrete path that's being proposed for destruction and relocation, or from immediate neighbors. Any further signatures gathered will be submitted to you separately. I just realized that I did not sign, but will certainly do so in the next round. I will also submit a separate public comment. Thank you, Ron Ortell.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And you said you had another phone call also? Or email?
Well, this is from Brian Coward, but it says, hello, I've attached a PDF version of my public comment for tonight's city council meeting. I also left a voicemail message to be played during the meeting, so we'll play the voicemail message.
Thank you.
Do you have that? Jay?
Dear City Manager, hi, Mayor Stoller and council members. My name is Brian Coward. I'm a Woodland resident that lives in the Spring Lake community. I'm writing in regard to item 12 related to Rick Gonzalez Senior Park Master Plan. I've appreciated the city's efforts with the Spring Lake Parks Master Plan update and the survey that was taken online and the presentation at the Community Senior Center, which resulted in the returning of amenities that had previously been removed from the designs. My main concern is the lack of public discourse and input regarding the Rick Gonzalez Senior Park Master Plan update since the addition of the possible school site expansion, which according to the map would impact the size of the park, existing walking path, decomposed granite running path, lighting, trees, and the proposed full-court basketball court. These are significant alterations to this park's plan, and no input from the community regarding the school site expansion has occurred. I'd like to request that the Rick Gonzalez Senior Park Master Plan update approval be postponed until the community input on the proposed school site expansion can be done. I've, I have many questions for the district, for the city and the districts regarding the neighborhood park acreage reduction, costly relocation of existing improvements, where the adult full-court basketball court will be if the district purchases the land, how the district plans to provide facilities in the Spring Lake and Tech Park area for estimated 1,400 elementary-age children, the impacts on traffic around the campus and park that will affect safety, how the district's plan to expand the Spring Lake Elementary campus will improve or harm the educational experience of the children, teachers, and staff. So a lot of questions there. But then also, the report states additionally, in response to growing school enrollment needs in the neighborhood, the Woodland Joint Unified School District reached out to the city during the public outreach phase to explore the potential to expand the Spring Lake Elementary School site. And I just want to know when the district contacted the city expressing interest in expanding the campus. And then also, when did the public outreach phase of the master plan update end? I know many others in the community have questions and concerns specifically related to this last-minute alteration to the park master plan update for Rick Gonzalez. And its approval must be postponed until those questions and others are addressed. I understand a joint meeting between the district and city regarding the expansions are being orchestrated, and I look forward to attending those meetings without the hindrance of a park master plan being prematurely passed tonight. Thank you much. Bye.
Is that it for public comment?
No, Mayor Stoller. So we have, I think, another voicemail from Ron Ortell, and he's raising his hand also?
He's had his three minutes, Madam Clerk. So we don't usually allow second comments on the same item. So, sorry, Ron, but that's, that's the way we operate here. So I bring it back to council at this time and ask my colleagues to offer their comments.
Mayor, Rich Landsberg?
Please proceed, Rich.
I read all the comments that were provided to city council members. This park is named after Rick Gonzalez Senior. You would be appalled if you heard the discussions about a park named after him. Rick Gonzalez was a leader in our community regarding education for children. That man created a scholarship event that has provided a scholarship for children over 1,000 times in our community over the years. I think you'd roll over in this grave if you heard that some people are upset that some school might have a role in part of the park. I do believe that we need further discussion on this particular item. Having said that about Mr. Gonzalez, I think it's a good idea that we postpone this particular item until we get more information. And the reason is, I'm not 100% clear as to what some of the people who are dissatisfied with the item really want. My understanding, Mr. Mayor, is that both the school district as well as the city of Woodland would benefit from this particular idea that has not been gelled yet. It's simply an idea at this point. I understand that the item is, would not be stalled by what, what we do or we don't do about those 2 acres. But I think it's time that we probably sit down as a unit with all the players involved and all the residents to discuss this a little further before we move it. I understand it's going to slow down the progress of that particular park, but it seems to me that a substantial number of residents are okay with postponing it for now. So I think we should postpone it. That's just my thought.
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember Landsberg. Additional comments from other colleagues?
Mayor Stoller, I'd like to make some comments.
Please proceed.
So I've too, I've connected with a lot of community members, have a lot of questions around what the implications of a possible school expansion would do to the community and the park. Now, with postponing, City Manager, how quickly can we get a community meeting together so that we set a postponement, but we also set a date for it to come back to council? I think the community is, is wanting to see something. They're expecting something, a joint meeting to discuss the possibilities, even ideas. You know, I would be in support of postponing if we set a date when it's going to come back to us for reconsideration.
Yeah, I've been in contact with the interim superintendent at the district around scheduling that joint meeting. You know, we would like to see that meeting happen within the next 2 or 3 weeks. We want to give sufficient time, of course, to get notice out there. But, you know, superintendent indicated that they would consult and get back to me as early as tomorrow with some potential dates. So I would project within the next 2 to 3 weeks, we'd be able to conduct a joint meeting, you know, at the staff level with inviting the neighborhood to come and provide some, some feedback around the concept. And again, want to clarify, this, this is purely an idea at this point and one that needs some, some serious consideration and vetting, both between the city and the district, but also the community.
And I'll add one other thing that I've also had folks reach out to me, just urging myself to, to really be in support and really work in collaboration with the district. A lot of these issues that are impacting families with children that are not able to attend Spring Lake School because of capacity. And the issue of not enough capacity within the school has been really impactful. And I, as I discussed with folks within the neighborhood, many families are splitting their, their children between schools, driving them around. So really, the sense of urgency from the communities who have family, families, excuse me, small children that are in elementary school and not seeing any collaboration between the district and the city has been disappointing. So I also want to speak on their behalf for the folks that can't get their children, all of their children into Spring Lake School, and for new fam, new families that will have children that are coming in. So I think there's a timely aspect of this that we need to address and coordinate to come up with a solution that addresses all of the, the needs of the families.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Vega. Additional questions or comments from others? I'll go ahead and, oh, Vicki, did you wish to speak first?
Go ahead. I'll make.
Well, you know, I always find it unfortunate when something that seems like a great possibility for the community ends up being something quite divisive. And I'm not sure, you know, how widespread that feeling adversiveness is, but it's definitely here. In a conversation with the, with the president of the school board, he expressed great regret that there's this situation because he felt this is such an obvious win-win for the community. And there are many parents in Spring Lake who have to take their children to other schools outside of the area because Spring Lake School is filled and Tafoya is also impacted. And Tafoya isn't even close. You know, if, once you get in the car, you don't need to stop at Tafoya. You can drive anywhere in the town. So it seemed like a great opportunity. And one thing that didn't come out in the staff presentation, but I, maybe it did, I, I think it's clear that the entire land, subject to purchase by the school district, would be play area. And we're not talking about building a single building on any of it. It's a play area. So the school district would be developing play fields that would be utilized by schoolchildren during the day and by everybody else after hours and weekends. So we're getting some pretty nice facilities that's then available to everybody. I think, I think, I understand the concern also, this school expanding. But you know, we're not the school board. We're not designing what happened to the individual school sites, and I don't think it's our role to do that. That's their role. And they've, they have considered this a great opportunity for a short-term And they have considered this a great opportunity for a short-term benefit. I mean, I didn't mean short-term benefit, I mean a long-term benefit more expediently than what's possible. We're not saying no to a school in the Tech Park. We're not excluding any possibilities. But, so anyway, that's kind of where my thinking is going at the moment, and I feel like, you know, hello, we got to take care of our kids in this town, and we got to perhaps give up a few other things in the interest of our children. And pointing fingers at the school board and at us, suggesting that we're acting nefariously is unfortunate. It's not the way we should operate as a community, from my perspective. So I remain open to hearing all the input of others. I think the idea of deferring a final decision on the master plan, while I regard as unfortunate, is probably necessary at this point because I think there's a lot of confusion being sown out there. One person who signed the petition mentioned earlier has already regretted his signing when he was given more information. So perhaps we need to have more, a community meeting where we share information, and hopefully the people who want to see their kids have an option in their school before seven years from now are there to speak up and say, this is important to us as a community. So there's my more than two cents. I'm looking at my colleague, Councilmember Fernandez, did you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Mayor Stallard. I appreciate your comments. I want to just ask for clarification before I give my opinion on any of this. Going on the master plan that we have before us, could I just ask for clarification? The $1.1 million estimated cost would include everything that's not in the shaded area. Is that correct? Or is that including the proposed master plan with the developed two acres by the city? Can I ask for clarification on that?
Certainly, yeah. Now, to be clear, the $1.1 million would provide for the tennis court, the additional landscape improvements on both the east and the west side of the park, so those areas that show up as unshaded around that dash line. The shade would remain as is.
Okay. And that would cover the $1.1 million?
Correct.
Okay. And my other concern is the parking mentioned by, I think, Nicole or Howard, who stated that there was concern that there was an issue with children getting out of vehicles and having the fear for their safety. Was a parking lot projected in that design at some point, and where was that location for a parking lot?
Yeah, the original master plan for Rick Gonzalez Senior Park did show a parking lot effectively where the now-proposed tennis court and landscape on the Mickle side.
And my other question, and I don't know if I can do this, but the landscaping along Mickle, would it be possible to do some sort of like, on Pioneer where the bus stop, there's an, you know, indentation where people park outside of the lane so you're not dealing with oncoming traffic? Is that even something that the city would consider providing some sort of option for that landscaped area? I think she was concerned that children were not able to get off the vehicles onto a flat area because of the landscaping. Is there any way to, and maybe this is not the time for that, but just listening to some of the concerns about the parking and the safety of the children who are accessing the park if they're coming in a vehicle was just a concern, and wondering if there's an option to include some sort of limited parking in the area of the master plan. And then lastly, just on a personal note, I know that we are concerned about the students in our community, and I know that we all have a vested interest and a desire to achieve what's best for our community, but I believe that the city and the district have been as open and transparent as possible under the circumstances, and that we have no intention of doing anything that would cause our residents to have a lack of trust in our decisions. And I think that we're looking at what's best for not only our students, but for our residents. So know that we have listened to your concerns and are open to listening to your concerns, but that we also have to look at how we can work together to come to a collaborative effort, to know that we're looking out for the residents as well as for the students of our community. And so I just want to agree with my colleague, Mayor Stallard, who says that we do need to work together in collaboration to work out something that is beneficial for our residents as well as our students.
Additional comments?
Really quickly, Mayor Stallard, just a clarification. So the area that we're talking about, possible school site expansion, that area would be available before and after school to the public, correct? I just want to clarify that that's the original thought behind this.
Correct, yeah. The concept would be that if we were to successfully reach agreement with the district, as part of that agreement, there would be a shared use agreement with the district to allow public access to that field area, which would more or less land within that two acres. It would also be larger than that on the school district property, so that would be available for public use during non-school use hours.
So in reality, we really wouldn't be losing space?
Yeah, I mean, the land would transfer likely from the city to the district. They would have control over it, but encumbered by a use agreement that would allow public access, albeit, right, not during this full extent of hours that a public park would.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
One of the things I liked about the plan, too, is the sidewalk, streetscape landscaping continues down on both the east and west sides and remains part of the city park and subject to the same maintenance as the rest of the landscaping on the east and west side. Is that correct, Ken?
That is correct, yeah.
So I don't think it'd even be obvious that this was separate, other than the fact that the area does have fencing around it, as is essential for the protection of children when they're using it during the school day. Okay, well, what's your pleasure, Ken? Oh, yes, Ken.
Motion to postpone this item until we have some time and gather the resources for public input on this particular item.
Before I ask for a second for your motion, Rich, I'm wondering if we could establish a date certain as part of the motion. Ken, do you think you can say first or second meeting in November?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly provide an update back to the council on the item, and if we're at a place where we're ready to move forward with adoption of the master plan, we can certainly do that. So we will commit to work with the district to convene a meeting in the interim and provide an update back to the full council and potentially take action on the master plan at that time.
All right. So we're not tabling it, we're continuing it, I think would be the appropriate term, to a future meeting as soon as the public meetings can be arranged and the matter resolved to a point where it can be brought back to the council for further consideration. Would that be a fair statement? Are you comfortable with that, Rich?
I am comfortable with that. I do want to make sure that our city attorney, Mr. Walsh, is on top of this item as well, since some of the players are making comments that concern me. I want to make sure that Mr. Walsh is completely 100% on board on this.
Yes, I am. Ken has been in regular contact with me about the assignment, so thank you for checking. That's Landsberg's motion. Does anyone want to second it?
Seconded by Mayor Protem Vega.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Landsberg, seconded by Mayor Protem Vega, to continue the item at this time with the instruction to staff to solicit public comment, perhaps in a public meeting, and to at appropriate time bring it back to council at the earliest date. Fair statement?
Yes.
Adam, okay, I guess I should ask for public comment again at this point.
No public comment.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Vega.
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stallard?
Aye. So the action for item 12 is continued for the time being. All right? I believe that concludes our calendar for tonight. I again want to adjourn in memory of John Hoover. John was a lifetime resident of Woodland. He ran Trainments Music Store for years and years and years in downtown Woodland. He convened with a handful of others the first meeting of the Woodland Downtowners, which led to the eventual redesign of the streetscape, widening the sidewalks, adding trees, and more handsome streetlights and the like. He was a gentle soul and a wonderful part of our community, and we'll miss him. Councilmembers, any last word before we adjourn tonight, many of you? Okay, they're being done. Well, this concludes our meeting, and we'll come back on the first Tuesday of November at 6 o'clock. Good night, everybody.